As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular Town Council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the presentation of the colors and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Be seated. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No changes, sir.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion we approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under Administrative Items, will be the Town of Clayton Strategic Plan.
Is it Nathaniel's? While Darcy is pulling the PowerPoint up, I'd like to introduce to you our Town of Clayton Strategic Planning Committee, who has been wonderful in guiding us in this process. So, good evening, council. We look forward to giving you a brief presentation of the work that we've been doing as we get ready to embark on a new Town of Clayton strategic plan. So, behind me, we have Sean Mazzell, our Contracts Manager, Darcy Ammon, who is our Administrative Support Specialist and guiding in strategic planning alongside myself, and Patrick Pierce, our Economic Development Director. We couldn't do it without the support of Rich Capola, our Town Manager, our executive team, and of course, our council, especially Mayor McLeod and Councilman Archer, who have worked with us on our selection committee as we've worked through the process. So, we're going to start very quickly this evening with an introduction of where we are and how we got to be at the point where we have made a selection. We have, beginning last year, began to see a need for us updating our strategic plan as it comes to an end in 2025. We began last fall working through an evaluation of our current plan with both our council in our fall retreat last year, as well as working with our department directors to evaluate the effectiveness of our plan. Did we still have a useful life out of it as we began to get to 2025? As a part of that, there was a decision made that it was time to begin developing a new strategic plan as our current one concludes, and we are a growing town and have directions that we need to begin to take ownership on with our growth. And then finally, we began to coordinate the strategic planning process with our ongoing master planning efforts. As you see in the graphic, we do have several different pieces that are going to tie this plan together with our current comp plan, all of our CIP and master plans, as well as the master plans that are not yet complete, that are in development. So, we're looking forward to embarking on the process. I'll turn it over for you to have a quick update as the project timeline and how we went through the procurement process.
Thank you, council. For the strategic plan, we did try to be competitive. Well, we were competitive, and we did follow the town's policy and procedures for procuring of services. So, we had an RFQ. Our release date was September 19th, 2023. And then we had a virtual pre-proposal meeting with the firms who were interested in our proposal, and that was on September 27th. We did have a deadline to submit questions. We posted an addendum with answers to questions posted on the North Carolina EVP system, which is where we actually advertised the actual RFQ. We had a deadline for submissions on October 20th. We had our firms' interviews with selection committee. That was done on November 7th through 8th. Between that time, we as a team went through the RFQs with the mayor and also with Councilmember Archer to actually look at those and review those, and we came up with a selection of three firms that we chose to bring in for interviews. And out of that, we came up with Raftellus as the most successful and most qualified firm for the actual strategic plan. I will say that today, I did receive the signed agreement back from Raftellus, so we have the contract in place. And next, we will go through the getting the requisition in place and the Town Manager sign off. So, we have moved forward, and everything looks good from the procurement and finance standpoint. Thank you.
As you can see, Raftellus was our selection, and part of the selection was based upon their extensive history with providing consulting services, their wealth of experience, their dedication to the individuality of our community, and they very much had a vibrant presence. And we are looking forward to working with the team you see on the slides here with Michelle Ferguson leading that charge. Some additional considerations. There was a presence both nationwide, but also in municipalities of our size and the conditions that we face with our growth. So, we felt that they were the right selection for us. We do look forward to this six to eight month process that we will begin working with them right now on a kickoff timeline, and then it'll begin with several input sessions, beginning with you all when we have our spring retreat coming up. And with that, we'll entertain any questions. I want to thank all of the team here, lots of folks who worked with us to get our scope identified, including all of you, our department directors, and then the group here continuing this process. So, we will continue with the core group, expand it to some other stakeholders, and a lot of other input sessions as we go along the way.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? I just want to thank you for a job well done. I'm excited that Raftellus is the company that we are going to be in contract with to create a new strategic plan for the Town of Clayton. Because summarily, a strategic plan is something that is a 10-year vision. But with the way things are in this world, 10 years is way too long to try to predict and grow. So, we're going to shorten that down to a five-year, and I'm excited to see what the results are going to be, not only for staff, but for really the entire Town of Clayton, and it's looking very bright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, moving along to old business, the next item is the multifamily housing revenue bonds resolution. And I'll give the floor to Robert Mackay, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Town Manager Rich Capola. Tonight, we're asking council to approve a multifamily housing revenue bond resolution. Town staff were approached by our bond council in McGuire Woods to act as a conduit debt issuer for these revenue bonds, which triggered a follow-up presentation that the representative of bond council, Kristen Kirby, and a representative from the developer came to the retreat on November 9th and gave council an overview of this project. In layman's terms, the town's willingness to act as a conduit debt issuer does not constitute an obligation to repay these bonds. It's not a pledge of our good faith and credit by the town. You know, the state law gives the town the authority to issue these bonds in the absence of a housing authority. In Johnston County, unfortunately, we don't have any housing authority. So, it kind of falls on back onto the local government to serve as that conduit debt issuer. Also, in the tax code, a governmental agency has to issue these affordable bonds in order for them to maintain their status, as well as for the developer to be able to leverage the tax credits that are related to affordable housing. So, technically, the town's willingness to act as the issuer of the bonds must not be construed as an approval for this proposed affordable housing project for any other purposes, including, but not limited to zoning, land use, permitting, or any other aspect of the project that could require approval by the town or any department or agency of the town. With that, I'll give council. If there's any questions, I can ask Kristen Kirby to come up. She's here tonight. If you have any technical questions about this affordable housing bonds, she'll be more than happy to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Any questions for staff? Listen. Oh, sorry, Mr. Case.
Do these bonds have any type of expiration date on them? Do they have an expiration date, I guess?
Right now, there's no proposed repayment schedule. This is a resolution that says the town is willing to act as a conduit debt issuer. If we get to the point where this project gains all the necessary approvals, it comes before council. Council's not obligated if this when this project comes back for approval to approve it, but assuming all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, at that point, when the bonds are issued, there will be a repayment schedule.
Awesome. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir. No further comments or questions from council. I'll turn it over for their deliberation. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, a motion we approve Resolution 2023-88.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Resolution 2023-88. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, our general obligation bond resolution amendment.
Okay. If council recalls, on August 21st, we approved the actual resolution for the issued remaining $4.5 million of GO bonds related to Parks and Rec. This amendment, is this aligning the resolution to match the repayment schedule? So, basically, we have a 15-year maturity term with the first payment commencing on August 1st of 2024. So, this is just like a technical amendment to line the resolution up with the actual terms of what the bonds will be when they're issued.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we adopt Resolution 2023-93.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 2023-93. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. And opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Up next on the agenda is the 2022-125 CZM Summer Glen Conditional Zoning and Master Plan. This item is continued from the November 6, 2023 meeting. This evening, the town will receive an update from staff regarding this issue. The public hearing on this issue has already been held and has been closed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, like the mayor said, we will be providing you a quick update with some of the conditions that were changed since this time is continued on November 6th. Originally, cemented, there was 139 lots with a density of 2.6 units per acre for a 53-acre parcel off of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. Since then, the old proposal for condition number seven, which set the standards for the development, there was a maximum of 139 with a previous service of 36% with a minimum lot size of 6,500 square feet. Since then, the applicant has come in with a new proposal stating that they will reduce the units to 138, which is one less, and that the minimum lot sizes, there will show being no minimum lot sizes less than 7,000 square feet. And they've gone further to break down how many units will be of different lot sizes for you. 69 of the lots will be between 7,000 and 7,900 square feet. 40 of the units will be between 8,000 and 8,999 square feet. Eight lots will be between 9,000 and 9,999 square feet, and 21 of the lots will be greater than 10,000 square feet. We've also added language that no variation of lot size will be allowed to be less than 7,000 square feet. Here is an original layout that was presented along with their concept plan and site plan narrative for this conditional zoning. There was, in the legend, it shows that there was potentially opportunity to have 6,500 square feet lots. Though there was none shown in their layout, they still had that presented in case they were approved for the 6,500 square foot minimum. They provided a new master plan narrative. They've updated that to remove that. And again, no 6,500 square foot lots are shown, and nothing below 7,000 square foot is shown here. In addition, they're showing the quantities for each of the new proposed lot minimum sizes. Another changes was to condition 11 and 12. The old proposal stated required frontage improvements along Glen Laurel and Vincent Road would be made in phases that correlate with the driveway connections to those existing roadways in the respective plan. Discussion from staff, the applicant, we've agreed that frontage widening improvements shall be constructed prior to the approval of the plat for the corresponding phase of the development. We believe that'll just provide a much more cohesive and complete product for the people should this be approved. Number 12, the following transportation improvements in accordance with the recommendation with the TIA in approval shall be constructed prior to the approval of the final plat for the first phase of development. We've changed the language here from the first phase of development to each corresponding phase and final plat for each one. Condition 13, which lays out the architectural standards for the proposal. In the old proposal, the applicant was proposing siding elements include premium mix of vinyl siding in various patterns such as lap siding, shake, and board and batten materials for architectural elevations. As of the time this was prepared for you, they updated that by saying siding elements' base package will include premium vinyl siding, and they will allow an upgrade option for hardy fiber cement siding or equivalent, including varying patterns such as lap siding, shake, and board and batten styles for architectural elevations. We believe they haven't updated the trip generation or anything yet, but we believe that it's consistent. Since it's one less thing, just a reminder, the planning board did recommend the recommendation of approval, and they provided you with a statement of consistency and reasonableness. The applicant is here to speak on the changes and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? All right. Any questions for the applicant? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I do have a brief presentation. I'll go through that, just in case that answers any questions you may have, if that's okay with you guys.
So, my name is Andrew Stocks. For the record, Stocks Engineering. Our address is 801 East Washington Street, Nashville, North Carolina, 27856. We appreciate you hearing us again tonight regarding the Summer Glen Single Family Residential Development. Since we last met in this public meeting setting, we have been working diligently, both as a development team and with members of staff, to adjust the proposed master plan and the master plan narrative to address your concerns and concerns that was presented by members of the public. Here tonight is represented as Wakefield Development Brett Mangum and Mike Boust are here. Chesapeake Homes, they're the ultimate home builder in the development. John Barnes, the president of Chesapeake Homes is here. Transportation, Exalt Engineering, Brittany Chase, who performed the traffic impact analysis study, and myself from Stocks Engineering, the civil engineer for the project. Some other Some other team members that have been involved are not here this evening, but that's our surveyor and our environmental consultant. I just wanted to give you just a brief history of the project, and I will keep it brief. We first met with staff back in April of 2022 in the pre-application meeting, and have been working with staff throughout, really, the last year and a half on just getting the particulars of the master plan and the master plan narrative satisfactory to the town criteria and to make sure we're following any other regulations that are in the town's UDC, and just to provide what we believe is the best project and the best proposed community to the town. We've also been working since the near beginning on understanding the sewer system and how the sewer goes through the Glen Laurel One Lift Station, and then to the ultimate wastewater treatment plant, and how the timing of the project is going to correspond with bringing the new wastewater treatment plant onboard. So there's just been a lot of those conversations that we've had with staff. As you are aware, there's been a lot of staff turnover and the people that we've been dealing, so we've been working hard through that to make sure that everyone, through these transitions, and we think that's been a good add to the project because it's given a lot of different eyes on the proposal, on the narrative from multiple perspectives. So the current zoning, as was mentioned, is residential estate. There is an R10 to the north, an R8 to the south, and then to the west and east are also residential estates zoning. It is classified as a low-density residential in the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, suggesting that the property should have a gross residential density of equal to or less than three units per acre. The property will be annexed into the town, and we will pay the portions of the volunteer fire department fee for the Wilsons Mills Fire District. The current proposed master plan includes 138 single-family detached lots. The density of these lots in relation to the project area of 53.06 acres is 2.6 units per acre. That does fall within, below the density that's called for in the Comprehensive Growth And according to that plan, the project area, or the density should be calculated by dividing the total project area without subtracting areas devoted to open space or other undeveloped area in the project. Mr. Casey, in our last meeting, you asked me a question, I just wanted to make sure you had an answer to that. So we were looking at the density of the project, if we took the resource conservation areas out, that was my understanding of your question. So there are approximately 4.26 acres of conservation area. That comes from the surveyed buffer of the stream, the surveyed wetlands, and the proposed, or the surveyed boundary. We did not have topo at the time, so we did look at the steep slope criteria from the county GIS contours that we could pull from the county's website. So the total 53.06 acres, subtracting the 4.26, would give you 48.8 acres of area that's outside of the resource conservation areas. And then if you divide the 138 acres with that, that's 2.8 units per acre, so it does get slightly more dense, but it's still less than the three units per acre described in the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. There were some changes to the lot lines in the master plan in efforts to increase the lot size. I know one of the additional concerns was the lot areas being 6,500 square feet. Our previous plan and narrative represented that that was the minimum, and that was a minimum. That was not the average by any means. There were many lots that were greater than that. So we have tried to provide this map to show a better, I guess, just bigger picture view of the actual lot size, not that we're cramming the whole property with lots that would be 6,500 square feet. So we have increased our minimum to 7,000 square feet instead of the 6,500, and there is a substantial difference in the lot sizes as well. So you can see that the lots ranging in the 7,000 square foot range to 7,000 to just below 8,000 square feet are 69 of the lots. Between 8,000 and 9,000, just below the 9,000, there are 40 proposed lots. There are eight lots proposed that are between the 9,000 and just below 10,000, and there are 21 proposed lots that are greater than 10,000 square feet. The major revisions that were part of the conditions of approval letter encompass these changes and list out these lot percentage breakdowns with a number of lots. I did want to highlight while we added this statement in the general conditions of approval regarding the planning director's, I guess, prerogative to vary those lot sizes. Through the code, we would have, the planning director has the opportunity, the ability, the authority, I guess is the right word, to vary those numbers by up to 10%. And we wanted to make sure that it was clear that we would not go below the 10,000, or below the 7,000 square foot mark. So if there was a need for a lot to tweak because of our actual topo, or backing up to a buffer, or a slope, or things that we just have to work through as we get into the design, we wanted to make sure that there would still be the flexibility that if we needed to say, oh, a lot could go from 9,000 to 10,000, then we wanted to make sure that flexibility was still in there, that we weren't nailed exactly to the 69, the 48, and the 21. But the mix would stay very much the same, and we would not go below 7,000. So that is why that statement was added. I did also want to just mention the changes to conditions 11 and 12. Condition 11, we did change the language as we met with staff to tweak that to be more in line with the language of condition number 12. We did agree with staff that the intent of those criteria did not change. The intent is just to provide and install, construct, the off-site improvements that correspond with the phase of construction. So as you can see on the map, Phase 1 is across the bottom of your map, and it's the lot, or the stretch of the property that connects us to the existing sewer. So that has to be installed as Phase 1 to connect to the sewer. And we wanted to tie the improvements to Vincent Road to that section, since we weren't, we would not be plating lots or installing the road all the way to Glen Laurel Road. It didn't make sense in the construction sequence to install those phases at the same time. So we wanted to just provide some language in those two conditions that was, that would clearly tie the frontage widening, the road widening improvements that are required in the TIA and per NC DOT to the actual phase of construction development, just to be more the construction process. I do want to take a moment now and to invite up Brittany Chase from Exalt Engineering, as she can address some more of your concerns, Mr. Sims, about the TIA and some other questions that the public had on traffic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brittany Chase with Exalt Engineering, 304 F West Milbrook Road in Raleigh. I've been practicing traffic engineering since 2003 with a small break to stay home and raise small children. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and this license is something to be taken seriously, and I approach each project with an emphasis on quality, responsibility, and ethics. Exalt does, we have the privilege of serving as one of the on-call consultants for the town as well. Exalt worked closely with the town and NC DOT staff to determine the scope of the traffic impact analysis, otherwise known as a TIA. The purpose of the TIA is to determine the impact of the proposed site on the study intersections and identify improvements needed to mitigate that impact. We are able to determine site impact by analyzing the surrounding study intersections in the future year without the development in place and comparing that to how the intersections operate with the development in place. The idea being that when the proposed development is built, along with the developer improvements, we want those study intersections to operate similarly to how they would operate without the development of the site. With committed and developer improvements in place, the study intersections are expected to operate at an acceptable level of service, a level of service C. The results of the TIA show that the addition of site traffic has minimal impact on the surrounding roadway network. In response to Councilman Sims' questions at the previous council meeting, we were contracted by Wakefield Development to determine what size development of this site would have significant impact on the surrounding intersections and therefore trigger the need for improvements. When looking at operation of an intersection, significant impact would be characterized by a degradation of the intersection level of service. Again, with our currently proposed 138 units, the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent is projected to operate at level of service C at buildout. The site would need to consist of 309 units for the level of service of the intersection to drop to a level of service D. I do want to note that level of service D is still considered an acceptable level of service. We use that level of service for planning standards when we're designing an intersection. In order for the intersection to further degrade to a level of service E, and that's when the traveling public is really going to notice that this intersection does not operate well, it's considered an unacceptable level of service, 561 units would need to be developed on the site. We did the same exercise for Glen Laurel at Powhatan. We're most interested at the stop-controlled approach for that intersection, that southbound approach of Glen Laurel. In an order for that to degrade to a level of service D, 555 units would need to be developed on the site, and to degrade to a level of service E, 740 units. And I'm available for additional questions after the presentation.
So again, we have been working hard as a development team, along with staff, since our previous appearance here before you back in November. We've adjusted the master plan, the master plan narrative, the conditions of approval. We've also discussed as a development team, along with the home builder, and would like to add one additional condition that was not previously noted in the documents that were submitted. The builder would like to remove the option for the premium vinyl siding, to stick with hardy plank or similar types of material on the exterior of the homes. We believe this will be an additional asset to the development and the proposed project, and will elevate the proposed community to the area and the surrounding public. If you have any additional questions for me or anyone else on the development team, we'd be happy to answer them and provide any information we have.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thank you for the presentation. I've got several questions. So if I understand from the last time that you came before us, you have a reduction in these, all the homes, the lots, that were 6,000 solos have been removed. Is that correct?
Yes, the minimum lot size is now 7,000 square foot. So the properties that were between 6,500 and 7,000, they've all been increased in size.
Okay, so with that increase, you only had just one home as far as going from 139 to 138, correct?
Yes, in a roundabout way. The actual number on our previous master plan was still 138, and then there was just, there was a couple areas that had mentioned 139 as the maximum, but we showed 138 on the master plan. So we were able to massage it and get all the same proposed 138 lots, but we have limited it in the general conditions to stop at 138. Yes, sir.
So what's the average then now of the overall square footage of the lots, the average size now with that combination? Do you have that?
I do not have that with me, no, sir.
Let me get your traffic engineer up here for a second.
Good, how are you?
Pretty good. So when your study as far as what comes into that for the peak hours during this, when the school, what's the school, Powhatan, the elementary school?
Yes, we did include traffic data collection. We extended our time period to make sure we accounted for the school dismissal time.
So what is, can you give me, like, do you have any numbers as far as what it changes from what to what?
What changes?
As far as the traffic, the traffic itself? So right now, there's no subdivision, correct?
Right.
So your analysis would be based upon whatever's not there now, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The site
So now, the next one that you're doing is with a subdivision there?
Right.
All right, so what is the traffic? Was it, does it go from 15 cars to 50 cars?
For the 138.
50 cars to 75 cars? What does that do with a 138 subdivision?
138, so you're asking for the trip generation of the site, essentially?
Yes, ma'am.
So our study was actually performed for 135 units. There's been three additional units. For 135 units, there's 1,370 trips per day, in the AM peak gets 101, and in the PM peak gets 135. If you want to account for those three additional units, about three, three units would, it's a good rule of thumb, is one trip per unit in the PM peak hour, and 10 trips per unit in the daily. So you would increase the 135 by three more. So 138 trips in the PM peak hour. And that's total, so that's in and out. So it's not 135 trips in and 135 trips out. It's 135 total trips.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. While we're on the subject of traffic, could you walk us through, I think there was a diagram or an explanation to what the improvements are going to look like at the intersection, the storage, the lanes that are being added, the signal that would be proposed?
So the improvements that are required to mitigate traffic include left-turn lanes at each of the driveways on Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. In addition to those turn lanes, for the UDO, the developer is also required to do frontage improvements as well, and so that's half of the ultimate section. The sections, the planned sections for Vincent and Glen Laurel are two-lane roadway with a center, two-way left turn lane, bike lanes, and sidewalks. So we'd be constructing half of that on our site extents.
Thank you. Could I ask a follow-up question about transportation? So the condition for the stoplight, I'm going to pull up which condition that is. So that's condition 12, and that's that first bulleted item. According to the NC DOT Congestion Management Section, comments on the TIA, the NC DOT signal improvements by others are planned for the intersection of Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road. The development team will discuss the timing of these improvements with NC DOT. Could you explain just in normal terms what we're saying there?
I don't know if the developer wants to speak more to that. Are you speaking about the frontage, when the frontage is going to occur?
Where's DOT's time schedule on that?
Oh, the, just the signal itself? That's true, yeah. That's expected to be built in early 2024. They've already done the design for it.
Okay. So the way this condition is worded, it would hinge on DOT's decision and DOT's timing. Is that correct?
I don't know. Want to speak to the language?
I think the intent was, it's not necessarily a condition, it's just stating that DOT is installing an improvement of the signal there, and the coordination with them has been done to verify that the locations of the proposed poles will work with a full frontage widening. So I don't know if we're necessarily answering your question, other than DOT is actively pursuing the installation of the signal.
Okay. So what I was getting at, and maybe we could pull up both the previous set of conditions and the current, I believe the wording has changed. My apologies for this cough, by the way, to everyone.
Are you saying it's kind of worded that our improvements hinge on their improvements?
More my concern is that the development, so as we've all learned over time, DOT plans can change.
Yes.
Funding priorities can change. We've experienced this at other, you know, very problematic intersections in town. I guess the way I read this is there is nothing that the town could do should the subdivision build out and the DOT decide that they're delaying or abandoning the plans for that signal.
So there is wording in the DOT approval in their review of the TIA that says if any of the committed improvements fall through, essentially, the developer would either need to construct those or submit additional analysis to show that they're not necessary.
Okay, so that, that's something that I would need to see then, and I know that this is, you guys have done a great job trying to address the concerns that we gave to you at the last meeting, sorry. However, I would need to see that, and I don't think I've seen that document. However, I would need to see that, and I don't think I've seen that document because, as I said, we have a history in this town of having, you know, plans that DOT is planning to upgrade an intersection or do something like that, and then construction proceeds, and then greater forces take over, and that improvement never gets made, and then the rest of us are stuck living with the intersection.
It's something I can pull.
This document is the DOT's congestion management approval of the TIA. I'm not sure if it's in there or not, so that's.
Yeah, it is. It's a letter addressed from Sam Lawhorn, who was the district engineer at the time, to Jonathan Jacobs, who was the engineer at the time. And it says, "The analysis includes background improvements by others. If these improvements are not in place at the time of construction, the site should provide these improvements or analysis demonstrating mitigation is not necessary."
Is that something that, I mean, just, do we have a copy of that, or has staff been able to even see this document or that sort of thing?
Excuse me, Joshua Engineering Director, I have not put my eyes directly on that one. I know Jonathan Jacobs was heavily involved in that one, but certainly I can review some of the files and check to see it's in there. I think if that's some concern, one thing that could be considered would be adding that to this condition or rewording it if you'd so choose. It could be an option where it encompasses that language in the condition, it would just be an option to consider if that's some concern you have.
Thank you. That is a fantastic suggestion. That's really what I personally would need, looking at this condition here, number 12, to move forward on a vote for that item. Just the way it's worded here, it just gives me no reassurance that that's going to be executed as described. Is that something that the team would be agreeable to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, because it's in our DOT's approval letter, I don't think we have a choice, but we certainly can add it to that condition on the town side, yes.
And I'm happy to hear other council weigh in, but that would be my preference.
For those DOT stoplight improvements, is there a turn, there's going to be a turn lanes, obviously, but is there actually going to be a left turn and light to go down Vincent Road?
There will not be turn lanes associated with the signal going in, it's just the signal.
Okay, and you said you classify that as a C?
Level service C.
Level C, service C as it is right now, because?
Level of service C at Project Buildout.
Okay, what is it right now?
So it's unsignalized, so it's, we look at it a little bit differently because your northbound and southbound are free flow, but your westbound delay, or westbound level service is level service E in the AM and the PM.
Okay. You do? You have the floor.
Okay, I have more questions. Thank you, ma'am. I have more questions for the rest of your team. So one thing that was part of the discussion last time was the amenity package, and I know that this wasn't brought up in this time. Has anything been changed with the amenity package?
The development team's still in conversation with some area, like the News Country Club or the East Triangle YMCA, about a potential membership for like a, kind of a trial period membership that they would offer to the new residents. There is no actual agreement on that. We did further talk about some other amenities as options, and we've decided that we believe it would be best to move forward with offering the, or requiring the hardy plank at full buildout rather than any of the other amenities. So that's kind of where we, we were before our meeting tonight.
Okay. So there's nothing else being pursued on this then? And you're basically just offsetting the amenity package and taking, throwing the hardy plank in there?
Well, we'll still follow the code in regards to the open space and those type of areas. So that is not changing. The space will still be there for the required open space, but there were no additional, like, technical amenities.
Okay, so I have another question too. So one of the other sticklers for me last time was the minimum lot size.
Yes, sir.
Considering that this is a low-density residential area designation. But just for clarification, there was no reduce, reduction in lot size, or lot units, but you reduced, so obviously you've taken some lots that were of a larger size and incorporated those into some of these smaller lots. Is that correct? Is that safe to say?
Yeah, part of it was that, part of it took a little bit out of the open space, but it ultimately didn't change the density in, in the overall, for the overall project.
So there's really no, I mean, I guess it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, basically, in this situation?
For the minimum lot size, yes.
Okay. And then?
Mr. Casey, can I, sorry, Mike Bous with Wakefield Development Team, you mentioned something about the, working with the community at large, and the builder's here with me, and he's committed to working with somebody for years to the local YMCA.
So, I'm sorry, say that one more time?
So they will provide a package to the new homeowner with the annual membership to the YMCA, local YMCA. We've spoken, we've spoken with them, but we can't make them a commitment because we don't have a zoning. So as soon as, if we're approved of the zoning, we'll formalize the commitment with them.
So it's just for one year?
That's correct.
So there's no, nothing in perpetuity or anything, so?
What we can do is we can guide them. You have five, you have news, you have several country clubs and the YMCA, so what we'll do is commit to doing the YMCA and let it be up to them as to joining any of the other. You can kind of put it forward to them, so.
Okay, thank you. Last question, well, maybe last question. Obviously, this last-minute decision to add this hardy plank, I mean, we've, y'all have reached out to us on council, and this is something that's kind of been just basically thrown at us within, you know, 15 minutes before the meeting started. So why the decision now? I mean, why was it, you know, a month ago when we were just, we were having these conversations?
Yeah, and the biggest reason is because I'm the engineer, I'm working with a developer on the subdivision, and we weren't necessarily with the home builder until they were driving in this afternoon. So that was the time that we had the longest conversation from, between the developer of the subdivision and the actual home builder, that they were able to get to that agreement. So that was, that was just part of that. We were, we were trying to do what we could, and then that did come in kind of the last minute.
Okay, no further questions?
Thanks, sir.
All right, anyone else?
All right, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
No further discussion. I will turn it over to the council for their deliberation. I'm sorry, sir, this is not a public hearing. The public hearing has already been and is closed. This is extremely information for just council for clarification from what was presented during the public hearing. So the public hearing is closed.
Here we have to discuss. Back to you.
No, sir. This is, the public hearing has already been taken place and noted in the minutes, and this is just follow-up information for town council. Thank you.
We originally heard this application a month ago here at council, and I went back and re-watched the video today for what we requested, what we sent them back with. And for me, for the things that I was looking for, they have met the criteria. In addition to that, I, with the additional information and explanation this evening about the TIA, I also have some of my fears about traffic resolved. Now, it's, it's definitely a difficult decision. There's a lot of pros and cons. I think that it's made difficult by the fact that the school is located just across from this development, and there's already a traffic problem associated with the school. I personally don't think we can hold this parcel and this development responsible for that current traffic problem that's happening there. They are proposing to add turn lanes as well as pick up the cost of doing the signal if something goes wrong with DOT. At this number of units, I feel like it, you know, amenities was one of the other, other items I sent them away to discuss. I think at this number of units, it's unrealistic to expect a complete amenity center like you see at a lot of subdivisions nowadays with the pool and the fitness center and all of that. So that they're willing to try to piece something together with the YMCA is a step in the right direction for that. The hardy plank was also a condition that I felt strongly about. I do wish the timing of this had happened sooner. We are kind of up here on the fly, trying to consider a lot of the details here. However, for me, it is meeting these criteria, and, you know, I, if my fellow council, because I know we have not, we got some of these materials just this morning, some, you know, 20 minutes before this meeting started, if there is more time needed to, to kind of comb through all of this and make a more informed decision, I'm fine with continuing it to the next meeting. And, and however, for my part, even though I know there are some drawbacks to the, the current traffic patterns in that area, they have met the criteria that, that we sent them away to consider a month ago. Thank you.
I guess my, I guess my concern, yeah, my concern is the school is so close. I've lived in an area where that school is right by there, so you're talking about an addition. And even with the, you know, the light going there, I still have some concerns as far as no turn lane. I just think that adding that now with those many units, eventually that land's going to get developed, but I don't know if that's the number that, that needs to be looked at. I'm a little shocked, by the way, that your, your, your average square footage, which you guys didn't know, or whatever, is 8,431. That's the average square footage, all right, for those homes. And I know Councilman Casey's concerns is big on this square footage for the lots. You know, I don't know, I, I still think that we need to start looking at up in the square, lot square footage a little bit more for the homes and everything that we're looking at coming, the type that we want here in the town of Clayton.
Mr. Casey?
Appreciate everyone's comments, appreciate the applicant, and I understand there's some, obviously some concern in the surrounding, but I watched the video from October 2nd as well. I mean, I was a stickler on the minimum lot size for the, we obviously have a big audience tonight for something special later, but this, this area is zoned for residential estate, which is low-density, a low-density subdivision. The applicant has a path towards that low-density or that residential estate application without having to come through us and coming through this conditional zoning. So in that situation, it would be a 12,000-square-foot lot would be the minimum with certain open space requirements, or it'd be a 20,000-square-foot lot, lot without those open space requirements. In this situation, it's a conditional zoning, they're looking for some reprieve on our lot-size square footages. My struggle with that is still with that minimum lot size being that small and something that's supposed to be a, a low-density residential estate. To me, you know, a 7,000-square-foot lot, or, you know, I guess, what, there's 109 of them, or of the 138 lots are, I guess, 8,000-square-foot and smaller. And if that's how we envision, you know, a residential estate zoning district or, you know, a low-density development, then that's just, I have a little bit of concerns with that. I appreciate the applicants making the, some, being willing to adjust the, the design quality with, with hardy plank. I know that Chesapeake builds a very nice home. I'm still just struggling with that, with that lot size. I feel like it's not conducive to the, to the general area. There's R8, there's our, there's residential state, there's R10 connecting it. So for me, I wish that they would, would have come back to and said, hey, you know, this is what we're going to do. We're going to, you know, we're not going to take some of these other larger lots to make these small, small lots a little bit bigger, but look at the overall lot square footage and, and tweak those some more. So I'm, I'm still sticking to kind of how I was last time. You know, please, you know, I wish those lot sizes were larger. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I think after the last, after the presentation of the last meeting, I was more inclined to approve than I am tonight. I'm a little disappointed in the presentation tonight, and especially after hearing the details from the traffic engineer, that, you know, the intersection, you're already looking at a grade E. And I just don't think putting it to a C with a light and no dedicated turn lanes, I just don't know that that's going to be much of an improvement. And for the, you know, one of the criteria when we approve things, it's got to be the public safety, and I just don't know that that's been adequately addressed, especially with the school there. And the traffic's already bad out there. You just drive out there any day and see the traffic's already bad. That's my hangup. And I do agree with Mr. Casey on lot sizes. I think we've robbed Peter to feed, to feed Paul here instead of doing something about it. But I must, I'm not amenable to the, what I heard from the traffic engineer tonight.
And I will just weigh in by saying that my, well, first of all, let's speak about those who are in opposition. In my 20 years serving as mayor for the town of Clayton, never have I ever received so many emails from people who are not in favor of this rezoning and proposed development. My concern is like whatever else is already stated. However, for me, an amenity is not working out a deal with something like a country club. An amenity is not working with the YMCA to help increase their membership off-site. And I don't want to set a precedent here in the town of Clayton that you can farm out your amenity to two other entities. I don't think that's ever been done in Clayton. I'm not really sure either, from a layman's perspective, that even how marketable is that project if you have nothing to offer but somewhere just to live? I mean, it's very competitive in Clayton, and if you want your product to stand out from the rest, then you have to step it up. And I don't see this as a step up. And I think that, you know, the amenity factor is, is something that's very important that I, I don't feel like has been, I don't think it's an amenity, actually. Obviously, concerns with traffic, but more importantly, there is a tremendous amount of opposition to this rezoning from people who live in that region, and I've also received a copy of a petition that's been submitted to us with over 600 signatures. So it is obviously the call of the council, whether you would like to continue to digest the information that was just received today and continue this to your next meeting, or if council is favorable to go into discussion and, and take action, that's your call.
I think with the change in council members, I would advise, if it's to be continued, that the hearing would need to be reopened. Because incoming council members wouldn't have had the benefit of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate all my fellow council members' comments as well as everything we've heard from the community. It, it sounds like that my opinions up here are in the minority, but I just wanted to state that I'm still, based on the, the changes that they have made, or that they're willing to make, and we could get into the conditions, I am in favor of voting for this. So in that case, it sounds like I'm in the minority, and I'm waiting to see if any of the other of you would like to make a motion.
Counsel, we have motions available for you, should you like to make one for whether or deny.
I'll, I'll give it one last shot. Is there any from the applicant to revisit lot size? Or amenities? I'd like to make a motion to deny ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to deny ordinance 2023-09-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to deny the adoption of the ordinance 2023-09-02. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Res zoning is denied. I am going to ask, just to give us another 60 seconds, and then we shall proceed with the recognition of outgoing council member. Want me to go down there? Or you want me to stay up here?
It doesn't matter. We can, we can do it.
Okay.
Whatever you thought.
All right. So the next, the next item on the agenda is the organizational meeting, and we will begin with the recognition of outgoing council members. For the last 12 years, it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with Mayor Pro Tem, town of Clayton citizen Jason Thompson. Never will you ever find a more committed resident, friend, citizen, Clayton High School graduate than Jason Thompson. 12 years of dedication, steadfast and true, to the citizens of Clayton, to the staff of the town of Clayton, and everybody in between. He's a true gentleman, he's a true spokesperson. He is someone who models the way in public leadership, and he is a leader who leads with the heart. That's who Jason Thompson is. And we, on behalf of the town of Clayton and the citizens and this council, want to thank you for outstanding 12 years of service to the town of Clayton in your role as a council member and as Mayor Pro Tem. So because your heart is so big and you lead with the heart, we had something in red made for you. And it says, "With love and appreciation for your continued dedication and service to the town of Clayton's Town Council, 2011 to 2023, to Jason Thompson." On behalf of the town of Clayton, we thank you, sir, for your service. And I will give you the floor for comment.
All right. First of all, I want to thank my family who has supported me through this endeavor. And 20 years before becoming a council member, serving this community anyway, missed more holiday meals together than we made together. And that's getting better with time, and not having to go out all hours of the night anymore like I used to as much. But they have nonetheless certainly supported me. I do want to thank the elected officials who came before me. I was inspired as a little boy by Mayor Jim Bailey. He was what you wanted in a public servant, because he did it for the people. He worked for those who did not have. When I was a little boy, Moore Street, just here on the other end of Main Street, across from Deep River, they had outhouses in the backyards and didn't have indoor plumbing all the way down there. And Mayor Bailey served with a heart and got improvements for those that didn't have. He got streets paved that were dirt here in Clayton, right here in town. He got indoor plumbing. He did so much for the people that was good. And that was really kind of my big inspiration going into this. The councils before me, Bob Satterfield, Michael Granis, Butch Lauder, Bobby Bun, who's in our audience tonight, everybody who's served has taught me something and has been a good example. Our mayor, I've had people ask me so many times, Jason, when are you going to run for mayor? And my answer is always the same. We've got a good mayor. He works harder than I do. He is good at it, and there's no need for me to run for mayor. And I tell people that all the time, that we've got the best, and I believe that. Elected officials that I've looked up to that inspired me to, as an adult, get into Ms. Donna White, Representative White, who's in the audience, just the finest example of public servant that I know. Craig Olive, Judge Joy Jones, Sheriff Steve Bizzle, retired Sheriff Donnie Harrison, and retired Sheriff Freddie Nerran were big examples for me of how to lead, and I appreciate every one of those individuals. To the employees of this town, I did this for you. I served as an employee of this town before I was ever a council member, and I've always felt like, sitting up here, that I'm obligated to represent the employees as much as I am any other citizen in this town, because the employees make this town go around and make it work. And we've got the best, and whether it's fighting for a raise, fighting for merit increases, fighting for benefits, for better working conditions, for better managers, I have fought that fight. Our police officers who are here tonight. If there's one hill I thought I would die on, would be fighting for the Clayton Police Department to restore leadership and to restore integrity at the top. And we did that about three years ago with hiring Greg Tardas, police chief, and he's the best. Ruth and Gretchen, I sincerely wish you the very best, and I want you to succeed. And I want you to acclimate yourself to everything, Clayton. Learn about this town, immerse yourself in this town, and be the best you can be for Clayton. I want you to succeed, and I sincerely congratulate both of you. I think that's about it. My whole life has literally revolved around these two blocks. I grew up one block over, went to school in this building, went to church next door at Horn Memorial, and so this has been my world, and it will be difficult to step away from it. But I am still going to be at your service to each and every one of you up here. I do especially want to thank and recognize the executive team. Rich Coppola, one of the best things we ever did on the council was hiring Rich Coppola. And he's put together a team of individuals who are leaders. And everybody on that executive team, you could unplug one and plug in the other, and it would still work like a fine-tuned machine. And Rich has done that, and he's built the team that this town needs to take it where it needs to go. And I will always be appreciative of that. As one of my last things I wanted to do before going out, as I said, I've always fought for the employees. And in the, this last year, we've tried to work out this merit-based system, and we just haven't quite got it fine-tuned yet. And so in some talks with staff and management of what we can do to kind of make that right this year, I would like to move that we give all full-time employees a $1,000 merit bonus, and all part-time employees who are eligible for the merit-based system a $500 bonus. And that's in the spirit of Councilman Bobby Bun, who started that example a couple of years ago and gave us this idea, and I'd like to continue that and make that my motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you for your service. I have the distinct honor and privilege to administer the oath of office to Ruth Anderson. Ruth, I'm going to ask you to join me down front, and we're going to get you sworn in. After we are finished with Ruth, we will ask Gretchen to step forward, and I'm honored this evening to have the Honorable Judge Addie Rawls in my council chamber. They say she's retired. I say she ain't never going to retire. And then for the last, I will be at the oath administered by my town clerk. So Ruth, if you will join me down front. I, Ruth Anderson.
I, Ruth Anderson.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Ruth Anderson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
For the town of Clayton.
For the town of Clayton.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
It's my privilege and honor to administer this oath to Mrs. Williams, my sister, friend, If you would now please raise your right hand. When I say aye, you to repeat your name. I.
Gretchen Williams.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
And sincerely affirm.
And sincerely affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authority.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I.
And that I.
Will endeavor.
Will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
I repeat your name.
I, Gretchen Williams.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duty of the office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
For the town of Clayton.
For the town of Clayton.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill.
Of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
Congratulations, Council.
Thank you, Judge Rawls. And at this time, I will ask the town clerk to join me down front. And my wife.
My wife said, you need to buy one out. And everything therein.
Raise your hands.
Thank you for this honor, Mayor.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Jody McLeod.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Maintain and defend the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Jody McLeod.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
Do swear that I will well and duly execute.
The duties of the office of the mayor.
The duties of the office of the mayor.
For the town of Clayton.
For the town of Clayton.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. At this time, I would like to call for a 45-minute recess. You all are invited to a reception out in the lobby to congratulate and celebrate a new day in Clayton, North Carolina. Thank you.
I'd like to call our meeting back to order. And welcome our new council members. I'm going to give the floor to our council members, our newly elected council members. If there's any comments you'd like to make at this time, and once those comments are complete, then we will move in to the other orders of business. And I will start with Councilmember Ruth Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow council members, including new council member Gretchen. It's exciting. And I really am honored to be serving on this board. When I was campaigning, I talked about being a member of Clayton for over 40 years. And what an honor that's been. This has been a great town for my family, my boys, my husband. We've lived here longer than we've lived anywhere. And when you get to be my age, you know, I've lived longer here than I did in my hometown. So very grateful to be able to serve the town that I love. And it's an honor. I look forward to serving with you all.
Thank you. Same here. Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, the residents of the town of Clayton, North Carolina, for giving me the privilege to serve as your council member. What an honor to be chosen at a time such as this and to serve the citizens of the town of Clayton. Thank you, the mayor, the fellow councilman, town manager, and the entire Clayton Town staff. Thank you. I am looking forward to working with you as well. I wanted to thank the support of all those that came out to support me, which included my pastor and First Lady Bishop, St. Anthony Powell, Senior, and Bishop First Lady, Elected Paula. Just want to say thank you to them and the Abundant Life family. I've also wanted to recognize all of the divine members, especially the Delta Six Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and also NAUW members. I just want to say thank you all for coming as well. Also, Mark Dimon was here as well with the IMPACT team of the State Employees Association, IMPACT. And I want to say thank you to all members of the Area L, and also the State IMPACT members, as well as District 42, under Sherwood Bay Leadership. So including is my family, which here with me. I had three sisters that came far, that drove almost three hours just to get here. And I want to thank them for coming and putting forth the effort for coming. My relatives included my mother-in-law, father-in-law, but they are all right there in their nineties. They came out to support. So I just want to say thank you to them. And there was also my sister-in-laws and brother-in-laws that came, as well as my family member, including my daughter, my son, and son-in-law, grandchildren watching live on YouTube. So I want to say hello. Gima loves you, okay? And to each one of the sound of my voice, I want to say thank you. Last but not least, to my husband for his love and support and for bringing me to Clayton over the 38 years. So again, town of Clayton, thank you for giving me a chance to serve you and I understand the charge at hand. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. So first of all, I want to say thank you to the citizens of Clayton. The day after the election, I got a phone call from a reporter, and he said, if there's any message that came out of the election in Clayton yesterday, what do you think it was? And I told him that they still love their mayor, because I got 862 more votes than I felt like I was going to get. And he said, that's really not the answer I'm looking for. I said, well, that's the answer that you get to print, because I'm truly honored. People who took the time to check a ballot for an incumbent says a lot, and it spoke volumes to me. And I'm certainly appreciative to the citizens of Clayton and my family, and to my dear sweet wife of 32 years, who has put up with me in public service for over 24 years. I'm appreciative to the town of Clayton staff. We're nothing without the town of Clayton staff in every job, in every position, every week after week. And I also want to thank my fellow council members, those that I have served with in my 20 years as mayor, and those that I'm serving with currently. I'm looking forward to what the future is for the town of Clayton. I think it's going to be very bright. And, you know, I want everybody to realize that as this council and your mayor, we hear your concerns. We know your concerns on growth. We know your concerns with traffic. We know your concerns with school population. We understand and we hear your message. And we are working diligently to make sure that our Unified Development Code is a lot tighter than it has been, so that we can demand the quality and the type of residential and commercial development that we want to see here in Clayton. We don't want people coming to Clayton to make a boatload of money and then leave us with traffic and overcrowded schools and all of that. Clayton deserves better. And if you want to invest in Clayton, North Carolina, you better bring your A-game to the planning board, because that is all that's going to be accepted by this mayor and this town council. Thank you again for all the love and support. It means a lot to me. My door is always open. I'm available by phone and email. And I can't thank you enough. I look forward to the next four years. Thank you. All right. So with all of that being said, the next item on the agenda is the nomination and the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem. And as you know, the Mayor Pro Tem is a very important job to the town of Clayton, because that is the person who will step in for the mayor in the times that the mayor cannot be at two places at one or anything like that. It's a very important role. It's one that I take very seriously, and it's one that I rely on tremendously in order to make Clayton be successful. So at this time, I will entertain nominations for the selection of Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Archer.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate fellow council member, friend, and Clayton resident, Mr. Michael Sims.
All right. I have one nomination for Mr. Sims. Mr. Porter.
I'd just like to back up and second that nomination for Councilman Sims. I've got to know Sims very well over the past few years. He's an outstanding gentleman. He gives and serves his community like he did when he served in the Marines. And I just would hope that Councilman Sims was our candidate.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I will entertain a motion to select Michael Sims as Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Clayton.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Up next will be the Council Liaison to Advisory Board and Committee Assignments. So I would like to read those out. Here are your requested Council Liaison and Council Assignments. Board of Adjustment Council Liaison, Ruth Anderson. Planning Board Council Liaison, Andrea Archer. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Council Liaison, Ruth Anderson. Public Art Advisory Board Council Liaison, Porter Casey. Fire Advisory Board Council Liaison, Michael Sims. Library Advisory Board Council Liaison, Gretchen Williams. Downtown Development Advisory Board Council Liaison, Porter Casey. Community, I'm sorry, Clayton Community Recreation Foundation Board Council Ex officio, Michael Sims. Campo Second Alternate, Gretchen Williams. North Carolina League of Municipalities, Jody McLeod. Triangle J Council of Government Delegate, Ruth Anderson. Triangle J Council of Government Alternate, Jody McLeod. These are the Council Liaison and Council Assignments put forth by the mayor. And I thank each of you for your willingness to serve in these positions. Questions or comments? All right. Thank you. I don't know that I need a motion to approve that or anything, do I? Okay. Just checking. The next item on the agenda was the Harvest Festival update, but because we've had such an exciting evening, the Dana Wooton, the Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, has asked that we postpone this until the next council meeting. So we will just make that at our next council meeting. Next, under New Business, is a Memorandum of Agreement, the Triangle Water Supply Partnership Agreement. And I will give the floor to Joshua Beard, Engineering Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. First off, congratulations and welcome to Councilmember Anderson and Williams. I look forward to working with you. The item before you is related to the Triangle Water Supply Partnership. This partnership began in 2009 as the Jordan Lake Partnership, and it was comprised of those water utilities that took water or pulled water from Jordan Lake, the available storage of drinking water in the pool there, and a group organized to work through the allocations, to divvy up that available water source to those that were pulling from it. Since then, the partnership has expanded to really the region. It's expanded to other utilities that are outside of those that pull just from Jordan Lake. It's become a collaborative approach for utilities of the region. They're pulling from Cape Fear, the Noose, Jordan, and really a collaborative effort to plan for the future, to come up with a water supply model and a water supply plan for the entire region, a water interconnect model to see really how water can be pushed throughout the region and how partners can help out one another if one has a day off or has some improvements to be made, and just being able to partner together and push water through different areas of the region, so building an entire hydraulic model. There's about 10, I think 10 or 11 different communities that are part of the partnership to date. As Town of Clayton continues to grow and seeks to expand its water sources and working with the county and others, we feel that it's important to become a part of that group, to become a part of that organization, to collaborate. We're all vying for the same resources. There's limited natural resource, limited water, and to having a collaborative approach with others to plan, to be able to have projections, and come up with ways to supply the water and to meet the future demand that we're going to have. We think it's important. I've been attending some of the meetings as a non-member, and I really see the benefit of a partnership and what we can do when we become of that. And we will become a significant player, certainly in the region, in terms of the water and the demand that we need. So continue to work with the county, but also working on a regional scale through this partnership. So the item for you is approval of the agreement. There is a yearly cost to becoming a part of the partnership based on our number of connections. It's $18,000 a year. I assure you that we would likely be spending that money just on planning purposes ourselves. This is a collaborative effort and efficiencies in all of us as a group, working through updates to models of the river and in terms of drought conditions and planning. And I foresee that we will certainly get our benefit from the yearly fee and benefiting from the collaboration as part of the partnership. So with that, I would request approval for, of the MOA, the Agreement to Enter into the Triangle Water Supply Partnership, and for the town manager designated to execute the agreement. I'll take any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Casey.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I make a motion to approve the MOU agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the MOU Agreement with the Triangle Water Supply Partnership. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll jump into staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
In the interest of time, I guess Mr. Thompson just stepped out, but I did want to at least say thank you to him and for the service that he provided to the town all these years. And for me personally, all the support that he's provided, I'll get with him afterwards to share some other thoughts there. Other than that, just want to remind everybody about looking forward to the parade this Saturday, 3 o'clock. Hopefully, everybody can join, but that's it for me today.
All right. Town Attorney. Town Clerk.
No report.
Any other staff?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. First, just wanted to say congratulations to Mayor and the two new council members. Look forward to working with you both. Again, I'm Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I wanted to just give a quick update over some of the holiday events that we've had and are, and ones that are coming up that the town manager mentioned. Our staff here has been working diligently on these in partnership with several of our volunteer organizations and nonprofits here. It's not on this slide, because I was expecting to be following Dana Wooton at the chamber, but I did want to recognize what a great success the Harvest Fest was, and I enjoyed all of my time there. With that, we did have Small Business Saturday. This was November 25th. We had a great turnout out there, talked to several of our businesses, and it was a record day for us. I know several of the shops had lines out the door, which is exactly what we want to see with an event like this. We partnered with the, with Last Friday and the Downtown Development Association. It's also great to have the farmer's market there at the same time, so that was fantastic. We were able to purchase those, thank you for shopping, local bags. We had about 175 of the canvas bags there. They were gone by 11:00 a.m., and people were just, they were, they were a hot ticket item to get. So those that came out and did it early and shopped early were able to get one of those. So that was a cool thing and, yeah, very awesome, very good to see other staff, very good to see some of the council members out there. So thank you all for being there and making that event a success. And just again, a thank you to Lydia Davis and Amy Sharon on my team for all their hard work on that event. Did want to recognize really quick, this is part of the Christmas program, but always we had our three storefront decorating contests. It's another thing our Christmas committee helps with here. These three winners, the People's Choice Movology, the Best Retail was Right Angles Framing and Art, and the Best Non-Retail was Studio 23 Salon and Boutique. All those pictures are on our Facebook page, but they did a great job. And just a big thank you to the Christmas committee for helping doing that, going out on their own time and, and taking the pictures and doing all the scoring and the judging. And thanks for everyone that went on the Facebook page and voted. That's an essential piece of this. Next, just mentioned the Christmas Village and Tree Lighting. That was just an awesome event. I was, got to team up with a, some of the volunteers from the G-Force Robotics Academy and did the Santa line, which was awesome, in Horn Square. That was really a highlight for my holiday season, of just getting to see all the families and the kids and all that out there. But just really a great event, lots of people out, you know, the bands, the dance group, everything that happened there in the tree came on without a hitch, which is always a good thing. We always like that. So just great to see the community and really I think what's something that makes, you know, Clayton special is this event that we have every year. So fantastic. Christmas Spirit Award, Jared and Jennifer Hamilton, they were our Clayton Spirit Award winners there. The quote there from Jennifer, talking about giving back, and giving back means extending the love that God has for a community with no strings attached, whether that's this time of year or year round, which is great. There's a full article about that on the website or Facebook, so go check that out. But a great embodiment there. And a big thank you to Santa and Mrs. Claus for their appearance that day, and the mayor, of course. Thank you for your emcee work.
My pleasure.
And lastly, I would mention the Christmas Parade, as, as Town Manager mentioned, that's coming up this Saturday. A few notes here, a big thank you to the Rotary Club and all the volunteers and all the volunteers and all these events. It's a big deal. We've got over 80 floats this year or entries. The weather is looking awesome, as in it's going to be similar to past years, but just in case anyone doesn't remember, it's going to go up Robertson, down Main, take a, take a right and come back up Smith Street, and then go down and end at Fayetteville. Robertson does go to one way at 11:00 a.m. The route will shut down all of the streets at 2:00 p.m. Main Street and kind of the core there from really all day, starting at midnight through 6:00 p.m., will be shut down from Town Square to Horn Square in order to get the barricades out there. And then the other parts of the route will shut down from 1:00 to 6:00, and should be all be open by 6:00 o'clock and have everything clear. But again, another great event, another great way to celebrate the holidays, and just love being a part of these and just again, really appreciate all the staff, all the departments, the electric department, our public safety folks, all of our streets and facilities folks. It really takes, it takes a village or a town to make all this stuff happen, and then all the volunteers, and just appreciate all of your support as we continue to do this. So thank you so much. Happy holidays to all of you. I know we'll get one more meeting here, but seems funny to not say that while I'm up here talking about holiday events. So thank you all. And I entertain any questions, if you have any.
Questions for staff? Thank you. Good work by you and your team.
Oh, I forgot. That's right. You can scan this here and get all the updates on all this and the Christmas and Clayton stuff that our communications team put together. Forgot about that slide there. So thank you.
All right. Any other staff? Awesome. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Excuse me. Hello. My name is Ben Chapman. I return to advocate for LGBTQ+ people living in Clayton and Johnson County. I want to offer my sincere thanks to council members Jason Thompson and Avery Everett for their service on this board and of the Town of Clayton. When I first stood up and spoke up all the way back in August of 2022, each of them responded to me after the public comment period and thanked me. Avery Everett in particular, I want to thank for rallying with students in Smithfield after they faced threats of violence. And Jason Thompson's got a lot to praise tonight. I want to add to that and say that his prudent investments in emergency medicine infrastructure is something that Clayton will benefit from decades from now. To Gretchen Williams and Ruth Anderson, I offer my congratulations. I met each of you for the first time at the NLACP Candidate Forum in Smithfield, and I appreciate each of your willingness to meet with local civil rights leaders in the community. I'm confident that you'll both serve Clayton well. Since August 2022, I've been advocating for an inclusive nondiscrimination policy and law. I came here first because I lived here, and because we're on the border with Wake County, it seemed absurd that unincorporated areas of a neighboring county should have greater legal protections than here. But most of y'all have heard that before, so tonight I wanted to provide you with some information about what has happened this year. On the 1st of June, unknown persons mounted three flags above I-95 here in Johnson County, transgender pride flags that had been marked with red and yellow paint. The red paint alluded to mass shootings, and the yellow paint was a white power symbol. I raised this at a public meeting of town officials in Smithfield, and on the day that I went to address them, the Human Rights Campaign declared a national state of emergency for all LGBTQ+ Americans. On a more positive note, on June 25th, 2023, Johnson County had its second Pride event and first ever community-organized LGBTQ+ Pride Vendor Fair. The community gathered in sweltering weather in Selma, and about 300 people came to show their support. We had community health resources, artists, churches, and civic organizations. I don't have a crystal ball for 2024, but I am wholeheartedly committed to working to ensure that LGBT residents and visitors know that they're safe and welcome here. With so much animosity focused towards minorities in my community, I want to partner with as many organizations as possible, including the Town of Clayton. So I'm excited to work with you all, and I can't wait to see what we can do in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. No one else wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to council for comments.
I just want to thank the council for electing me as Mayor Pro Tem. I'm truly humbled. I hope to serve you all as the best that I possibly can, and wouldn't have anybody but the mayor to be able to at least emulate and be able to get my leadership skills off. So again, appreciate you all, and I don't want to let anybody down.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Casey.
I just wanted to first say, look forward to working with you, Gretchen. Look forward to working with you, Ruth. And Jody, well, you've been here, so. Used to you. But it's an exciting opportunity that's going to happen within us, working as a group and jailing as a group. We have a very diverse board, probably the most diverse we've ever had. You know, Councilman Sims' leadership is phenomenal, but we, that may be, you may be the very first African-American Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem. So, you know, I think, you know, we have a lot, have a great future, and I'm just excited to work with everybody. And if y'all need anything, Gretchen or Ms. Anderson, please, please give me a call.
And ask him 1,000 questions each time he calls you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Casey. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter and to discuss purchasing of real property.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And an economic development opportunity. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're back in regular session. Is there any further business to come before this board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.